Welcome everyone to the Swanee County Board and County Commissioner meeting for April 5th, 2022. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Stapleton give us the evocation and the pledge.
Lord, we come before you this evening to do the business of the county. We ask you to give us wisdom to understand all sides, be fair and impartial to each and every one here. We also ask you to put your arms around and guide and protect our first responders, law enforcement, our military around the world, and also police people, Ukraine and all of those citizens in harm's way. We ask all of this, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with item number one, approval of minutes from March 15th, 2022, regular board meeting. Mr. Harris, could you?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there is a brief correction on bottom page 377. That motion was made by Commissioner Hale and seconded by Commissioner.
Any other directions to the minutes? Any other motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton and seconded by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On the consent agenda, Mr. Harris, you wanted to comment before we put on this item four.
I actually have about three up here I'd like to comment on, if that's okay.
Yes, sir. If you would just.
The first one, item four, those are reimbursable expenses. And there's a statutory provision that says that we need to change the number on the one listed at eighteen dollars for dinner to nineteen dollars as a statutory issue. Then on number fourteen, I just want to comment that the reason the meeting is being moved to the City Hall is that the supervisor directions will be using this facility on that date. And then on number fifteen, a change order was proposed at six thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Where you receive a copy of an amended change order, the lift station has been removed. The only change order that would be included is in the amount of six thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, and that's the final grade, and then we will sod those areas. So the change order amount is six thousand six eighty-nine point eight-four. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Prabat, you have something on item seventeen, eight?
Yes, sir. On the authorization for the Parks Department to deal with grants, whether they be in the department itself or whether they be at the airport, I'd like to point out that we typically do this, authorize them to do that, but at that operational department head level, they need to report back solely to let us know that they made the application. We still have the opportunity to be able to reject any grants that they may get a little bit later on. So I want you to be aware that they may be applying, but they still have to report to you. Time-wise, they may have to go ahead and apply first, but just that they will make it before.
That is it?
Yes, sir. That's it.
Is there any other comments? Can we give news or?
Yes, sir. One other comment on item number thirteen, on the MBI direct mail. There's a provision in there regarding venue and secondary provision regarding indemnification that it needs to be tweaked. So when you address that thing, I would ask that you add to the agenda item after approval of the agreement, after.
So if you're being a little scared, attorney.
Want to run that by me one more time?
Yes, sir. You need to add that thing in.
That is it? Anybody else? Would that be, or any more discussion or go out here, a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries for consent. All right. Five oh five, or sooner thereafter, if the matter can be heard over public hearing to consider, item number twenty-five, sorry. Five oh five, or sooner thereafter, if the matter can be heard over public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving special permit request number SP twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one by Ignite Wireless, authorized agent for property owners, CSX Transportation Corporation, to be granted a special permit under section fourteen point one-one of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for an essential service. This means.
Before we get started, Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody out here that anticipates they may give testimony during this particular public hearing, would you stand to be sworn? Can each of you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board to see if it will be the truth so help you God?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. As you approach the podium to whatever you do, please state your name and address for the record.
Please. Mr. Chairman, board members, the application board has other considerations tonight. It's a special permit request number SP dash twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one, special permit by Ignite Wireless, authorized agent for CSX. The application request is to construct a two-hundred-and-sixty-six-foot self-support tower on property zone agricultural one. The general vicinity location for the proposed site is at the intersection of County Route two fifty-two and Ninety-Ninth Lane, and this location is just east of the location of US one twenty-nine. The proposed application that you have in your packets includes the proposed site plan as well as the supporting documentation supporting the request and its compliance with the land regulations of the county. The site is an eleven-acre parcel located in intersection of two fifty-two and Ninety-Ninth Lane. The proposed setbacks that are shown on the site plan in conjunction with the request shows that the center of the tower will be approximately two-hundred-and-thirty feet from the northern property line, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight feet from the southern property line, one-hundred-and-eleven feet from the eastern property line, and two-hundred-and-fifty-eight feet from the western property line. Our office has received the FAA no-hazard determination by email today that we've made part of the record record. We've also received a copy of the FCC registration, and I've made a copy of those and placed them in the file for the record. I've copied the county attorney's own and county administrator's on those two documents that we did receive. In your packets, the board has a resolution that is written for approval. If the board so chooses to approve the request, with any other special permit request for essential service cell communication towers, the board has always included a condition that the board, the board head commissioners, will be granted co-location for emergency services should that need ever arise. We've included that language in the proposed resolution. Also having a conversation with the county attorney, Mr. Prabat, and this will weight the legal description as worded. We may have to get the board so chooses to approve the request, may have to modify the order in which the legal description is created. We followed the description as it was written and submitted, and it includes the description of the easement first and then the description of the lease second. So we prefer that the description of the property be located first, and then the easement that would be inclusive of that would be located second. That's all I have to add on the request. At this time, if the board has any questions of me, I'll try to answer them. If not, then I will enter the file and its inclusion as part of the record.
Are there any questions with the staff?
Okay, at this time, then I'll take a complete file in if you can present it as composite exhibit number one.
You have representatives from Ignite Wireless that's present here tonight to present their requests to the board and answer any questions that the board may have, and I'll turn them over to the staff.
Welcome, and name that address from the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Andy, last name Roden Strike. Roden Strike, just like his surname. My address is four twenty twentieth Street North in Birmingham, three five two oh three. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Ignite Wireless, who filed this application for a company called City Switch. City Switch is a company that would build and own this tower if it's approved tonight. This tower is on CSX property. CSX needs this tower in order to further its own communications. CSX is not in the tower business, City Switch is, so they've contracted with each other for City Switch to build towers on CSX property, whether it be next to rail lines or on CSX owned private property such as this. As Ronald said, this is an eleven-acre tract, zone A one. So again, this is a tower for use by CSX. We absolutely agree to the condition that Ronald mentioned, to place at no charge the county's equipment on the tower if it so chooses. And we're also fine with the change Ron mentioned regarding the changing of the legal description. So we're perfectly fine with those. So Swanee County has an ordinance in place regarding towers. That section of the ordinance is the first thing we look at when we look to construct a tower. In this particular case, being on eleven acres, it's a very wooded lot, there are eleven criteria under your special permit review criteria, and we meet all of the criteria. We meet all the setbacks, we meet all the requirements of your ordinance. With that said, with CSX having this tower built where it is, City Switch, the tower owner, has already been approached by AT&amp;T to hang its equipment on this new tower if it's allowed. AT&amp;T is currently on a tower about a half a mile away that is seeking to remove itself from that tower and come to this new tower. So AT&amp;T is trying to keep its coverage while being able to freely upgrade AT&amp;T's equipment to provide Swanee County with the latest technology. Now, AT&amp;T, moving from that one tower to this new tower, has caused the existing tower owner, a company called SBA, to object to our application for this new tower. The existing tower owner, again, SBA, is a multinational company with tens of thousands of towers in multiple countries. So it really boils down to what are the benefits to Swanee County of approving this tower to allow AT&amp;T and CSX on it? Well, first of all, AT&amp;T will install FirstNet on the new tower. FirstNet, as some of you may know, is the national first responders wireless network. It was created by Congress after nine eleven to make sure that fire can talk to police and police can talk to EMA when there's a natural disaster. During nine eleven, those different departments couldn't talk to each other very well, so this helps solve that, and it gives priority to first responders on AT&amp;T's network when there is a natural disaster or emergency response needed. That technology is not currently on the existing SBA tower, and we'll get into why that's the case, but it will be on the new tower. Also, by allowing AT&amp;T or allowing this tower to be built, AT&amp;T will move its equipment, as I said, and will install the latest technology to be deployed on the new tower, which is not currently on the build plan to put it on the old tower, such as 5G when it rolls around Swanee County. C-band, some of you may be aware of that, it's a technology that allows for greater communication and allows the network to function better. All of these additional and future technologies will go on the new tower. Additional carriers, other competitors, Verizon, T-Mobile, Digi, will be allowed to come and place their antennas on this new tower at an economically reasonable rate. That's what we're really here about for AT&amp;T, and that's what SBA's opposition is here. It is the rent rate SBA charges to AT&amp;T. I submitted a letter, which I think Randy had submitted to you guys. It's on, my letterhead looks like this. Attached to that letter was an affidavit from an executive at AT&amp;T, his name is Tim Brenner. Tim is responsible at AT&amp;T for situations where AT&amp;T's rent has gotten so exorbitant on certain towers across the country that it's having to relocate the towers or the equipment in order to stay competitive and in order to keep reinvesting money in the communities. Tim states in his affidavit that continued co-location on the SBA tower is economically burdensome. SBA currently charges a much higher rent than City Switch has agreed to charge for the same space in the same area. And since AT&amp;T is co-located on the SBA tower, rent rates have become more competitive. When AT&amp;T requested rent reductions from SBA, unlike the other companies that we also, AT&amp;T also rents space from, SBA refused to lower its rent to be competitive. The cost of relocating AT&amp;T's equipment from one tower to the other requires significant costs to AT&amp;T, but in this instance, the new tower still remains the most viable option for AT&amp;T. So SBA is here to argue against this tower, against a tower that meets your ordinance, is asked to be treated the same way SBA's tower was when it was placed here years ago. But, you know, those towers that SBA has, they charge such rents that they have in essence a monopoly, and without competition of this tower, SBA can continue to charge higher rents to all the carriers who can then invest less money in the rest of Swanee County. So specifically, SBA provided some comments to you as well. I wanted to just address them, there are four points that they were made. Number one, they talked about the FAA approval and the FCC approval, both of those have been provided. We actually were just issued those yesterday, that's why we didn't have them submitted originally. Photographic simulations of what the tower will look like. Your ordinance says if required, and the reasons those weren't required is because SBA's tower is already there about a half a mile away, so everybody already has an indication of what the tower will look like. The second point SBA made is the tower, that SBA's tower is reasonably available for co-location. Well, it's not pursuant to the affidavit of AT&amp;T. This tower is for CSX, but AT&amp;T certainly can co-locate at an economically market viable rate, so that AT&amp;T can continue to keep its service in the area, to upgrade the new technologies, to get FirstNet on this system, and so it can continue to provide the best service to Swanee County. SBA's rent system operates like this. Let's say you have an apartment that you rent for five hundred dollars a month. You decide two months later you want to move a couch into your apartment that you're paying five hundred dollars a month for. Your landlord comes back and tells you they're going to charge you an additional two hundred and fifty dollars to put the couch inside the apartment that you already rented. That's how SBA charges. Every time AT&amp;T does an upgrade to its equipment or changes out its equipment to keep up with the latest technologies, SBA requires an additional figure. City Switch and the other tower companies do not charge that one. So that's the main reason for AT&amp;T's concern. I have an AT&amp;T representative here, Mr. Kevin Craig, who will be happy to tell you why it's important to AT&amp;T. But what I'd like to finish with is, we've submitted an application for CSX through City Switch. We meet every provision of your ordinance. Planning department has agreed to that effect, we have to give no variances. Therefore, we just request to be treated like the SBA tower was when it was built and ask this tower to be approved, and we will add AT&amp;T on if it's approved. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Anybody have any questions?
I got one.
Display.
I'm just curious about the five and now, your last name.
Just say Andy, I get it all the time, don't worry.
Andy, out of curiosity, what, I mean, I don't know if CSX has a line or rail line there within twenty miles. What exact equipment, why are they in here?
Well, so they have a network that does operate to, so their trains can talk to each other, but they're also out and they own tons of land and they're expanding their lands all the time. But when they're out in general, they have their own network that they can be able to talk. So it's not only communications along the rail lines, it's communications in most areas where they're employed. Sorry, that was a good question, I didn't clarify that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I may have some questions, but I'm happy to let the other party in then. We may have some questions.
Sure, I'll be happy to come back up, thank you.
Do we have a representative here from SBA?
Mr. Craig, you're at AT&amp;T.
Go ahead, you can go ahead first and then I'll get you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Craig, three five five, Aherne Street, Orlando Beach, Florida. Thank you, Andy. I've been working with Andy for a few weeks and I'm still just calling him Andy, not going to try and tackle that last name, but appreciate y'all taking this up tonight. I know when you consulted with your families about running for elected office, there's to be all the passion for tower rent relocation discussions, so thank you. AT&amp;T's invested approximately two and a half million dollars in our network here in Swanee County over the last three years. We've had some serious momentum, and I know we have more exciting plans underway, especially in consulting with our network team on this issue. Our network team considers a number of things when we're deciding where to invest our capital and enhance our network, and one of these factors is the ease and cost of doing business, something that's burdensome areas, mostly those are in South Florida, let's be honest, but places where we're able to go and invest capital. And one of these things is having the flexibility to relocate from high-rent and burdensome sites. It's key, not just for us, but for all the wires providers, providers, as Andy mentioned. The tens of thousands of dollars in savings annually that we'll have due to this new site availability will be funds that we can and will reinvest here in Swanee County in areas where there are coverage gaps. And so as we look to not just improve our traditional consumer network, as Andy mentioned, it's also about FirstNet and enhancing our FirstNet coverage for first responders. So it's the consumers, it's first responders, it's key to having this flexibility, and so that's why we're optimistic that this new site will be approved, so that we have that flexibility, can realize those cost savings, so we can invest those dollars right back here in Swanee County. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Friends, Ryan Maloney, M.A., L.A., O.Y. I'm at One Independent Drive in Jacksonville, Florida. I'm an attorney, I represent SBA, submitted the opposition that you guys have in front of you. We're talking about an issue here with two towers that are going to be less than half a mile from each other. That's why I thought simulation is important, not just so you can see what one tower is going to look like, but where you can see what multiple towers in a very compressed area are going to look like, particularly multiple towers that are not willing to increase coverage or signal strength in any appreciable manner. These towers are essentially overlapping, and the documentation that's been submitted with SBA's opposition shows that. And even if you look at what AT&amp;T or Ignite has submitted, you see the same thing, it's a significant overlapping in coverage. So the vote is sent, I think, should be required. It says required in the, in your code, your land use, your land development regulations, so that's one thing. In addition, they have to provide evidence to show that they can reasonably co-locate on an existing tower. And what we know is they are currently on the SBA tower. And you heard a lot of talk about, well, the SBA tower's too expensive and, you know, we can't afford it, but a couple things to remember there. One, this is a contract that SBA and AT&amp;T agreed to many years ago, and a contract that is still binding at this time. And two, an affidavit that SBA submitted along with its opposition is that AT&amp;T has never contacted SBA about renegotiating the rates on this tower. In fact, this is really part of a nationwide campaign by AT&amp;T to proliferate towers unnecessarily to get out of a contract that it's already agreed to with SBA and other tower providers. If you look at the letter that was submitted by AT&amp;T, it actually references another county and state, a county in South Carolina. It's not about live over Swanee County, this is a nationwide program by AT&amp;T. And the idea that all you have to say is, well, I don't like my contracts, I want to build a new tower less than half a mile from my existing tower, just sets a very dangerous precedent to proliferate these towers. And look, everybody knows they're not the most attractive things in the world, you don't want to have them everywhere, particularly if they're overlapping each other and not providing any additional coverage or signature. You heard discussion about the, I'm sorry, the FirstNet, that capability. There's room on the SBA tower for AT&amp;T to install FirstNet. There's nothing that will stop AT&amp;T from doing that, and SBA is certainly willing to negotiate and work through that process. The additional technology, same thing, there's nothing, there's room on the SBA tower and there's nothing to stop the negotiation in that regard. In addition, there are other carriers that are on the SBA tower, so if this tower is built, it's not like the SBA tower's going to come down. You can have two towers within half a mile of each other. I also think, you know, we learned today that the FAA and FCC letters were submitted, but, you know, we also don't have the, we haven't seen those, those aren't on the agenda, and also we don't have the setback requirement. We addressed that in our opposition, but your code is section fourteen eleven point seven, provides that no communication tower shall be sighted within a distance equal to or less than the height of the communication tower from the property line of properties that are zoned single or single or multiple family residence or any established permitted use for group living, facility, school, or hospital. All of this surrounding properties are zoned A one agricultural, and each of those allows for single-family homes and schools to be in those, on those properties. The new tower is two-hundred-and-sixty-six feet high, and what we heard is on both the northeast and west properties, there, it's not setback more than two-hundred-and-sixty-six feet, so it doesn't comply with the setback requirement. So to summarize, for all the reasons that I've mentioned that are in SBA's opposition, I'd like to make sure as part of the record, a special permit application should be denied because it fails to meet the county's land development regulations because it fails to prove by evidence specific to this case that they cannot reasonably co-locate on the SBA tower. Not generic arguments regarding other counties and other states, specifically in this case, where they have not even attempted to negotiate with SBA, as stated in the SBA affidavit of which is in the opposition. And it would not increase coverage, didn't hear anything about any substantial or appreciable increase in coverage. And it's not in the public interest to proliferate towers when they're not necessary. And I would suggest that AT&amp;T should focus on coverage gaps, such as in the northwest area from where the, from where the SBA existing tower is, rather than putting a new duplicative tower less than half a mile away from the existing tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Does anybody else have any questions? Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you.
With that, we'll hopefully look forward to public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, it's now. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Name is Bruce Hallet. I live at nine two nine four, one forty-first Drive here in Long Island.
What was your last name again?
Hallet, H-A-L-L-E-T-T.
Thank you.
I have just one quick comment and suggestion. If the new tower is to be approved, I just heard a comment made, the towers are not the most attractive thing to look at. They can be disguised so that they look far better than they would otherwise. I've got just one, you hear, I can provide a whole series of similar photographs of towers that are disguised in much nicer, facilitate the landscape.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
And if you want other copies of this one, I'll.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
I was a staffer, one four five eight one, third and second pass, I will. I didn't bring it back from last time. This is the third time the address is coming up. I didn't say the second time, y'all let the second one go in, and I'm glad this one brought it up. He was with our group too, by the way, so I guess he got, he did a little more of the bill. I assumed that y'all took, I was disappointed in every one of y'all. I was disappointed in every one of y'all last time, when the second one came up. We don't have to do this, they can make money, and people can make big money. I tried AT&amp;T myself in the past, and I got tired of it, probably did drop. So I'm with Verizon, I get dropped with Verizon too. So I'm not opposing better coverage, this gentleman says there's not better coverage, he's probably right. I may have misheard something, Andy may have misquoted, or that gentleman may have misquoted. I'm leaning towards him though, or maybe I misunderstood what I said. If AT&amp;T didn't petition that other tire company to renegotiate, then we're being presented false evidence here. I'm concerned about that, but, and I could have misunderstood. It's the, but I'd rather see these go up in the future. Actually, I heard ordinance, I'd love to hear this be our ordinance, something similar. It don't, that narrative looks real fine, that's what I was, had in mind before. We don't, I love, I hate to turn the phone, but I gotta use it. And I'd like to have good coverage, but we don't have the, that gentleman, one of the, right, that gentleman's right about, they get nasty, y'all seen them, when they start all building up. And, but I'd rather have two or three of these around than those very galvanized messages, you know? So anyway, I, I think the first time I spoke up here, I asked for controlled growth, you know? And we were a total different area then, but this applies too, you know? This is a beautiful guy, I moved here because I, I like simplicity and all, I don't want to see it become Jacksonville, you know? So, thank y'all for this.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't hold my hand up, what, two?
Scott, you swear our firm a testimony you'll give before the board to see who the real proof set up the guy?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I will.
Name and address, sir?
One four one six oh seven Sixth Street, Long Island, Florida.
Name?
Greg Scott, I'm sorry. Greg Scott, I didn't pronounce that. Question for Donald, is, will confirm that this is on Old River Corridor property?
It's on, it's on CSX property, I don't know if it's part of the Old River Corridor, that may have been part of the project, but it's, it's CSX on property, that's where it's at. I'm having to try and answer, I think that somewhere along ninety-ninth Lane might have one time years ago been part of that. I can't confirm that, though, that was my.
I understand that's, well, I think that's where it was, but my concern is, and the thing I realized is CSX property, they're doing a lot to with it. If you don't, if you don't say yes, then they're going to buy that property, give it to us, to burn, burn bike trails through. On if they're willing to give it to us, and if they, if they were to give it to us for bike trail in the future. Two, is there room to get the bike trail around the proposed payout? But my concern, I'd, I'd be familiar to the county to not bring that up as a conversation. At least, we have a relationship with Duke now, we have Austin Bridge, basically we're working on getting from Bradford north to Duke as that corridor, except for that small piece in the county to give to the city, so. Information, thank you.
Mr. Scott, please.
Just to be transparent and kind of add to some of the things that it brought up, wanted to state that, you know, we had, we had also received the engineering certification itself collapsing distance and that the tower would be designed to collapse on itself. The issue was brought up regarding setbacks, just wanted to try to clarify that. He's correct in that section fourteen point eleven does mention setbacks of the required towers. Initially, it's always been, you know, a rule of thumb, height of the tower away from property lines. But the way that, that section is worded is it says, for properties zoned for single-family residential usage, schools, hospitals, and things like that. There's a section of the LDRs that I would just kind of refer back to, and it falls under definitions of groupings of various districts. And under the residential area, it says, where the phrases, one-family residential districts, one-family residential district, zoned for, one-family residential district purposes, or phrasing or similar intent are used in these land development regulations, the phrases shall be construed to include the following districts. And that's RSF one, two, and three, four, RSF one, MH one, two, three, four, and RMF, or RMH one, two, and three. Agricultural one is not included in that type of language. So that's why I hyped the tower setback from not using in the evaluation of the site. So the required district setbacks would apply in this, in this situation.
So the setback is good, it's?
Setback requirements meet the required setbacks for Agricultural one's on the district.
For informational purposes, it's section four point one point six.
Thanks, Mr. Meacham. Anyone else?
Sorry, same name, same address. I didn't mention, I got caught up in the picture. Monopolies ain't good for us, you know? And I hate that it's half a mile away, but it sounds like his company is taking advantage and it's costing all the consumers. So I'm actually for more tires, you know, just don't be open to it, you know?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? No one else, I will, closing forward, close comment?
Just a second, Mr. Chairman, do you have any rebuttal?
Well, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Provide. I was going to talk about the setbacks, but I think I'll handle that per the ordinance, we meet your requirements. It also says in your ordinance, in two places actually, that when looking to build a new tower in Suwannee County, every effort needs to be made to locate on towers that are existing based on, but if not, you can say you cannot co-locate based on engineering and economic considerations. The ordinance is what drove AT&amp;T to approach us. But I want to make sure we're clear, this tower is being built or used by CSX on CSX property. AT&amp;T is simply going to be a co-locator. If they choose to stay where they are, fine, but they're allowed to get on here and they've expressed interest in coming. But this tower is for CSX on CSX property, that's what we're trying to make sure we, that's what the application's for. The other thing I'll mention, and, you know, the concerns raised by the gentleman about the tree, we camouflage towers a lot, mainly when we're twenty, thirty, fifty feet above a tree line. This one's a little taller, and the types that we do camouflage like trees are monopolist signs, which we don't typically build over a hundred and ninety-nine feet for safety reasons. This tower's two hundred and sixty-six feet, which by the way, is, I believe, sixty feet shorter than the existing tower. And the carriers that are already on that SBA tower besides AT&amp;T will hopefully come over to the new tower, which would then cause that one to come down, and still only have one in the area at the end of the day. So with that said, again, I wanted to point out, this is a CSX property for the, used by CSX, and we're happy, as your ordinance requires, to allow others to co-locate. And the ordinance also says, just to summarize, that co-locate, or building a new tower is allowed where no other existing communications tower meeting the needs of the applicants. And in this case, if it doesn't meet the need of AT&amp;T, they'll have another option. This is exactly the monopoly issue, right? I mean, we don't stop CBS from building next to Rite Aid, you know, or now it's Walgreens. We don't stop one bank from going across the street from another, creates competition, which helps the consumers. That's what we're trying to do here for AT&amp;T. If they want to get on, just let them reinvest the money in Suwannee County, as Mr. Craig indicated. I'll stop there and try and answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is, we have a couple of things. First, do you have any documentation that states where you tried to negotiate with them?
So we did reach out, I don't have that document with me, but I will supply. There's a letter that has gone out to SBA on every tower that AT&amp;T has tried to renegotiate with. I don't have that letter with me, but I will get a copy and submit it. We've, I mean, SBA knows the letter, they've seen it. And we've been doing this, as Mr. Maloney says, all across the country. Florida's being particularly hard hit because of the high rents they're charging in Florida.
Next question, and I'm comfortable, and I'm gonna ask it, because it's about citizens, and it's about what SBA. Does anyone care to share what those numbers are? I mean, we're sitting here talking about things that, and we're saying they're insulting it, and that's why you want to do something different, but is anybody willing to say, hey, it should be such and such, and we're twenty-five percent higher, or seventy-five percent higher, I mean, I just?
I don't know what the numbers are here, again, I'm here for the city switch and to build a tower on CSX property. But in other situations I've seen, it would save AT&amp;T tens of thousands of dollars a year, per tower. And we're talking thousands of sites around the country. So, you know, it's not just about one, but here, that gets the money right back into Suwannee County, according to Mr. Craig's comments.
Thank you, anybody else?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, one, I don't have any.
I mean, I'm kind of torn here. I understand the situation about monopolies and competition is a good thing. You know, but I also understand that, you know, there's no, there's really no added benefit for our, our citizens on coverage. I've had AT&amp;T cell phones in the past, and the service in Suwannee County is, I'll be honest, pretty terrible. That doesn't make me not an AT&amp;T fan, but, you know, to, to, I understand Mr. Scott's comments as well, and CSX owns this piece of property that's sits between, which was at one point Old River there, now Duke owns part of that, River there. CSX owns a piece right in the middle that at some point, maybe in the future, y'all let us have, maybe you don't. You know, maybe you, you know, you know. But, you don't have the documentation where you reached out to SBA, your current, I mean, your current landlord, Luke Zor, to try to negotiate a better rate, and I just, I'm kind of torn. I feel like this board's caught in the middle of a tenant landlord dispute, and you're asking us to be the judge here on who's right and who's wrong, and it's kind of somewhat of a civil matter. I mean, you want out of your lease, and maybe that's the way out, I don't know, but I gotta look out for the people of Suwannee County once they met their best interests at the end of the day.
Well, let me address that, because you're raising good points. Let me get back to, this is a tower on CSX property, or used by CSX, which AT&amp;T can use as well. Whether AT&amp;T come to not, that's up to them, and we hope they do, they've expressed interest. So I want to make sure we're focusing on the application, which is for that tower on CSX property for CSX to use. We meet the ordinance, right? Under the federal laws, I think we're going to be, you know, it's going to be a tough decision. I'm not trying to put you in front of a leasing dispute, and you're right, but that leasing dispute's not with CSX. Mr. Maloney didn't mention one word about CSX. He has no issue about CSX that he can point to. With regard to AT&amp;T, we did submit AT&amp;T coverage maps. Mr. Maloney submitted SBA coverage maps, which I don't know where he's getting his information, but he doesn't have AT&amp;T proprietary information. I have these that do show some change. There are many instances when we're dealing with this and SBA shows up to try and blow up the process, like they're doing tonight, where we're building towers a couple hundred feet away. This case, we're half a mile away, so the coverage is improved, and AT&amp;T's engineers say that in this model that I can show you. You have in your packet, but it's probably not highlighted for you. The main objective, as I read this from AT&amp;T, is for them to get better coverage along Highway one twenty-nine. As a matter of fact, the engineer for AT&amp;T says that the existing site, the SBA site that AT&amp;T has, only serves a portion of Highway one twenty-nine, and a portion of rural residential areas needed to meet engineering requirements for AT&amp;T. The new site, the planned site, if they co-locate on it, will improve that coverage, including those, for those including traveling along one twenty-nine, connecting Live Oak to the north and O'Brien to the south, including more residential areas. So there's your improvement for AT&amp;T. Again, this is CSX. So AT&amp;T is telling you it will improve it. I don't know where SBA's getting their information, but it's not from AT&amp;T. So I hope that answers your question, and you're right. To the extent that you guys feel like you're in the middle of this, my apologies, but this is their game plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Question, after.
Yeah, I got something. You done, I'm done, which, please.
You was referring back to CSX is build the tower for their self. Do they actually use the tower, or are they just building the tower to lease places on it?
So they reserve space on the tower for their use. When they get to it, you know, hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later, but that's, yes, this is for their use when they need it and for their communication system.
Chairman, for who?
Yeah, I think mine's more of a statement than a question, I'm just, you're just talking to my board and to you guys as well, but, you know, I got three things here that I wrote down. Number one, does the application meet all the county requirements? I think we've seen that it does, and we explained that. But the next two are kind of, the important ones, and I'll be honest, I live two hundred feet from the cell phone. And it was before I was commissioner, and I didn't pay attention, they advertised, and next thing you know, I got a scrub like, and went back up. That's on me. Hasn't necessarily bothered me, other than, you know, I see it, and it is what it is. But I still get a phone service inside a home with a little roof over that close, so that's good.
Want to you?
Yeah. But with that being said, the number two question is, how and will it affect, you know, the residents of that area? I don't know how close, I know it's an eleven acre track. I know how it affected me and some of my neighbors, so that's been a big thing for me, you know? Be kind of a tower, solar, et cetera, we require setbacks, buffering, vegetation, et cetera. You know, that's that. And number three, if I'm hearing this right, what you alluded to was, and I'm just, I'm assuming, yeah, I'm gonna make, I'm asking, is, with the newer five G and other things that are coming out that you mentioned, and AT&amp;T would like to essentially do when that time of that technology gets here, is you guys probably won't do that on this tower, because of the extra cost to bring it in the couch, if you will. Whereas you're saying CSX is not going to charge you, so it's for extra equipment, et cetera. That's the three things I've gotten out of it, and I just wanted to bring that to my board's attention again, and the things that goes in my mind. Appreciate what the two citizens of Suwannee County got to spoken. In the end, the last thing I wrote down is, is true, how does it, what does it boil down to, and how does it benefit the people of Suwannee County? That's what we're here for, y'all's dispute has nothing to do with us. We don't want to get involved, I don't want to get involved with that, we got enough problems with them.
And that's why I brought Mr. Craig here, so he can show you how it helps AT&amp;T, which helps the investment in the county, because that's where it's going to benefit, the coverage will stay there. So AT&amp;T won't leave it uncovered, but it also will get the latest technology, FirstNet, which is huge. I mean, we have communities, you know, following city switch and AT&amp;T to get FirstNet in the community, and it will go on immediately if this tower is built.
Yes, sir, which, please?
I agree with Mr. Commissioner Lanning. I invite us to get drawn into something that we really haven't had enough time to sit down and look at it. We have an option. Let's go on to work, and let's get a problem in. How much time are we looking at? Is there something we could, could, to, uh, discuss tonight, and we're still, still going back and forth, and it don't seem as if we're getting, gaining any ground. And it's getting rather confusing, because it first started off with a break, and then, and then we're bothered, and then we're bothered. So at this point, Chairman, I, I'd like to know, how much time do we have, far, before we have to get to decide on what we're doing with this tower?
And Jimmy, jump in, but there is a federal shot clock out there, and it is running up towards the end. I'm not sure the board, this commissioner meet before it ends, the shot clock ends, but.
And, you know, from the standpoint that you kind of go ahead and address these issues tonight, I mean, And, you know, from the standpoint that you kind of go ahead and address these issues tonight, I mean, if they seek to have a continuance of some type, to be able to present something sufficient, you can be able to, you know, consider such a request. But, uh, we'll remind y'all that this is an application that has submitted by CSX, you know, for this particular item. If you're going to, while you're dealing and considering all of these things, you need to be considering, if you are not going to, uh, grant this thing, that you, you will be required to give down specific reasons for not granting it. So, you know, I'm hearing that, uh, you feel like it meets the, uh, application criteria, but be aware that whatever, uh, you know, reason that you have, you will have to state it on record for the night.
And that's what I was trying to do in the beginning, was keep it simple about this application. All this AT&amp;T, I felt like I did address it because of the letter you guys received. If you guys hadn't received that letter from SBA, this is a CSX matter, AT&amp;T expressed interest, you know, they can come on, but that's a simple co-location, which is allowed administratively under your ordinance and federal law. So, we're just asking you to focus on the application. None of this AT&amp;T stuff really matters with regard to this.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is, um, we don't, we don't have a place on y'all's side.
Right.
I mean, this is a CSX deal, asking for a tower. That's what we're here to consider.
That's what that question is.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Which point?
Now, Andy.
Yes.
Hmm, may I ask you this question? Has CSX approached SBA about a possible room on their tower? And, and what benefit, what benefit does CSX have of constructing a tower that, I mean, I'll be honest with you, uh, Swan County's been dear to my heart, and I don't want to see cellphone towers every half mile scattered across our county, I'll just be frankly...
No, I'm, and nor does anybody want that.
Right, so has CSX approached SBA to say, hey, we need to put some equipment up in southern Swan County, central Swan County? What would you charge us to do that? Y'all approached them up without being attentive.
To my knowledge, no, they have not. CSX Communications is housed only on their property, you know, CSX owns billions of acres, and along the rail lines and properties like along this, along existing or previous rail lines.
Yes.
They don't build their communications, they don't want to deal with a landlord.
I see.
And because they have so much land, they really just don't have to. I don't represent CSX, but that's just what I've seen. So, that, that's the answer to the lawsuit.
You represent it?
City switch.
City switch?
Yeah, Ignite, who filed the application, is a vendor of city switch, they're the project manager.
I got you.
They filed it under their name. Next time, I'm gonna make sure they put under city switch, because that got confusing as well.
Any other question, or Mr. Andy? Thank you, gentlemen.
Just briefly, I appreciate the addition of time. I do think one point is, is, is important, to the extent that this is an application solely on behalf of CSX. Nothing in the application, to Commissioner Land's point, there's nothing in the application for you that shows CSX cannot co-locate on the SBA town. And that is something that is required under your regulations. They're the applicant. We all know it's really about AT&amp;T, but technically, if it's a CSX application, you have nothing for CSX. He doesn't represent CSX, he can't provide any evidence or testimony to support the application on behalf of CSX. Nothing that's important. And then just briefly, and so that's one reason that you can deny, and you can usually deny, frankly, under your, uh, regulations, taking into account, you know, to avoid unnecessary proliferation of towers. In addition, the coverage maps that AT&amp;T supplied, if you look at them, they don't provide the frequencies, they don't provide the methodology. Uh, and even so, if you look at it, it's pretty duplicative coverage. The coverage maps that SBA provided do provide the methodology, there's an explanation, uh, and then there's also the frequencies, and it makes clear that this really is duplicative. And if you look at the coverage maps from AT&amp;T, I think it's the third one, there's a really big hole to the northwest of the SBA tower. That's where CSX or AT&amp;T is putting up this tower, not in a place where there already is a tower covering that area. So, that, that's all I want to say, and I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, President, it's been a great last time, but I, I'm not clear on what Andy said about...
Please re-identify yourself.
No, no, it's still Moses, uh, prefer it, one four five eight one, under second pass. I vote, I, I'm not clear on what he was saying. I think he said normally, we don't go over a certain amount of feet, and this is two sixty-six. I'm still pushing on the, the per tower opposed to over the tire. And I heard loud and clear, I think I agree, uh, I must be boring, some people are shaking heads at me, but, uh, I, uh, the... I agree with Andy on the, the reality that if, uh, this company's taking advantage of AT&amp;T and other people on that tower, that towerage will probably wind up coming down. So we may, if, if they're, I don't know that much about CSX and their tower business, but I know they're not primarily in the tower business. And, and, and I think they're probably more friendly to the communities than this tire company, or tire company you're talking about. Uh, and I, I don't know if he can answer the question, if, if a tree tire can be built with two sixty-six in it?
Not with that type of tower, the, the structure of the self-support title.
Can you do any, uh, camouflage tire at off two hundred sixty-six feet?
Just to address it, um, the idea of camouflage, and you're right, is to make it look like not a tower. But at some point, you're gonna put enough stuff on it where it's gonna stand out even more. That's why, like, before I said, you know, we typically would make them look like trees when we're not too much above the tree line, because then they blend in. This is gonna look like a two hundred and sixty-six foot bottle scrubber in the middle of eighty-foot trees, right? But it's not even that type of structure, and the reason the tree wouldn't work is because we use the single pole design when we do those. Anything over two hundred feet, I think it's into some safety issues, that's why they built the self-support, the three-legged type, which we're proposing. Hope that helped.
And if two hundred feet, you can't get the coverage you need?
Can't get the coverage you need, that's the whole thing. The physics dictate the height of the tower, not just some number to pick out. But, look, we always try to make it as least intrusive as possible, trust me. We're not putting the, we're not proposing the guide tower with the big guide wires like SBA has, we're not proposing that one. This is the three-legged lattice tower, like we've seen, actually, there's a couple downtown here, my boy.
Thank you.
Well, it does, I...
Going back down on what he's saying, then, uh, I, I'm with Mr. Stapleton, and, uh, and Land, that there's no evidence that, that a new tire is necessarily gonna trickle back down to the consumer. And so, if we're gonna wind up with two tires and the consumer don't benefit, I don't see the benefit. I'm done with it.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, uh, we're now closed. Just, uh, close above a comment. Uh, any more discussion on this matter? To me, it's, their contracts, their, whatever they got going there, really has no effect on, or the way I see it, has no effect on what we need to do here. It's just, uh, whenever we're gonna put one for, let CSX put their power up. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
Yes, sir.
It's, I feel like we're in court right here, but, I mean, I, I'm with Commissioner Land, and Mr. Stapleton, and Commissioner Hill, and Leo. I realize that CSX is putting up a tower, though we kind of got down to weeds on the first order, so I can't go back to where, what, what we did talk about, what we did talk about. And then we're talking about, they were charging too much money, and we want, that one, AT&amp;T wants to get on another tower. And then we're talking about, do we have documentation to where they reached out to try to negotiate? And we don't have that in front of us. I mean, if I had that...
Well, that's kind of where I go back to, and I don't think we're, we necessarily got to look at that. Has nothing to do with us. Where, where CSX is asking for the tower, and I don't see what they have between one another, has any bearing on it.
But, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with everyone here, because we don't need to be involved in that part a little bit of good, back to kind of what you're suggesting, they're, they're applying for a tower program. And the only other thing I would say is, number two is, and this is how, I think we've always based any of these programs, is, what is the benefit for the people of Swan County? That's really as simple as it is, but I know it's not that simple, but you guys understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I like, I like...
Good point.
Um, I mean, there's a lot of speculation here. We're, we're, we're speculating it's not a tenant landlord dispute. Um, you know, we, we speculate that CSX may or may not give us a right of way across that property for green trails at some point. Um, uh, we're, we're speculating that the, uh, consumer may see some added benefit. I would say that more likely the consumer not gonna see any added benefit. Um, uh, I know FirstNet's a good, a good tool that, uh, AT&amp;T has in their toolbox, Verizon has a tool very similar to that, where it puts First for Saunders first on, you know, a needed basis, should something like that arise, where towers are damaged, storms, man with, I guess, whatever you call it, is reduced. Um, so, I, I, I understand it's, it's CSX, and it's CSX asking, but I would agree with Commissioner Stapleton, we kind of got to go through the weeds on, I mean, AT&amp;T's all in the middle of this, these letters I've been seeing and reading. Um, a half a mile, I mean, a half a mile down the road, I, I just, I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna go ahead and say, I, I can't see the benefit for Swan County to put another tower half a mile from one that already exists. I mean, Andy's right, CSX owns millions of acres, but they own any property anywhere else in Swan County where they could put a site that's not half a mile from one that already exists. I, I don't know the answer, but, uh, I'm just not there, I'm putting one a half mile down the road, one's already there. Well, I'm back there by myself, and I think that's...
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman. Is that, and you brought up a question there, I'm not gonna answer to possibly, is there anywhere else in Swan County that CSX would be willing to put a tower up? Or is just that...
At this particular point, we're outside the realm of public, um, public and evidentiary, but, so you really can't talk to them right now. It's what y'all heard, to discuss the evidence that y'all have, uh, before you, uh, to make the decision.
Saying that, I'm, I'm on a legal counsel, I used to stay in trouble with him, but, uh, I wanna, I wanna be with Mr. Land right here, right now. We kind of got put in the weeds on the stuff. I, I, I understand the chairman's place, what, where I would leave it, was where I feel like I'm at right now, is, when the first order, there's a possibility for these folks to know that y'all are leaving, and they can give you a better rate. If not, CSX circle back around and come back and say, hey, this is the evidence we got. Uh, I, I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm not, I don't have, I don't have an answer for it. And I realize, I realize, as legal counsel said, it's gonna come back in front of us. Tonight's not the end of it. It doesn't matter what happens, unless you tell them that they put that tower up, um, but, um, like Mr. Hill also, obviously, added benefit, at this point in time now, there may be additional information that shows that, but... That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Uh, Mr. Jim, I, I'm stepping aside on this, too. I think making a case, decision, very, very problem, and, uh, appreciate what everybody's saying. At the same time, it's on our shoulders, and I feel as if we're getting into somebody else's territory. I know that we're trying to, they would ask for a permit, but that permit, uh, uh, AT&amp;T had plenty of dollars in it. And that's, that's what I'm saying, I can't see that, uh, we don't...
Mr. Vat, would it help if we postponed this till I can get the letter I referred to earlier, that showed we negotiated? I mean, I'm happy to do that, that's what it...
I appreciate that.
Mr. Andy, um, procedurally, I think we need to ask the chairman that question, let it be addressed by the board, and we can continue, have the ability to continue this hearing to, uh, another date, uh, to entertain additional information.
If, if that's what's holding you guys up, is the letter that we don't have in front of us now from AT&amp;T to SBA, I can get that for you if you want to postpone it, real withholdage, shot clock violation claim that we have, if that's, uh, concerned.
Mr. Andy, I, I, I appreciate that, but I think we're just here to hear if we're gonna put CSX a tower on a piece of property.
I do, too, but I just heard the extra...
I don't think it matters what AT&amp;T did, what it do, or what, it just don't, in my mind, doesn't matter, if it's, are we gonna prove this tower? So that's where I'm... So with that, I, I think we should just continue going on with it. Or that's my opinion, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board tonight.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just, just to follow up, I would, I would like to say I would, uh, entertain what Mr. Andrew said to come back, and not just with documentation on that part, I understand what you're saying, I'll say that again, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I would like, if possibly, CSX would be willing to entertain a different location that would help the citizens of Swan County when they put that tower up, and AT&amp;T went on it. If you come up there to that podium and show this down, I'm, I'm on board, hundred and ten percent. Uh, and I, I don't know, I'm stating this wrong, because of that legal counselor here on my back, but, uh, if that's, if that's okay to ask, or request, then we can at least answer that question when you circle back around.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I think what Commissioner Stapleton's saying, what I'm sitting here thinking, if, if, if AT&amp;T, and I don't know if I can answer that question, but if A&amp;T was to, if we was to approve this, and AT&amp;T was to, and again, I hate it to be about that, because it is about the application, but we're looking out for people of Swan County. If you guys are saving tens of thousands of dollars a year, will the citizens of Swan County see that when that AT&amp;T bill comes their, their residence? That, that's what it really, I think is some of the questions up here.
But I'm, we can...
But we can, I mean, we can, again, again, I'm, I'm, he's looking at me, so I don't even...
Y'all need to be addressing this to the chairman, so the chairman, you, you, to, you know, consider the request, uh, to, you know, for, um...
I get, the question here now, I guess we're down to, is do you, do you guys want a continuance, or do you want to...
Mr. Jim, I, I made my, I, that's why I questioned, how much time will we put, how much time we can, to, so I can get some more understanding to where we're going? I know it's about a permit, but, again, I just feel that, have permission, Mr. Jim.
I'm sure, uh, which can be...
I just follow up the same thing, I, I don't want to sit here and tell anybody no. I mean, that's, that's, we're just, we're in a bad situation. So, I feel like this is, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna refer it to you, because I really can't talk to them, because he said we can't, so... My thought process is, I would like for them to have the opportunity to come back, present a little more evidence, present a little more ideas, possibly, if there's any event that we can do, and possibly a different location. Uh, but obviously, at the end of the day, it's up to you to somewhat make that, I mean, you can get consent from the board, or you can ask for, you know, if there's a motion, I mean, to vote on it. So it's, it's up to you, you're, you're a boss.
I don't want to be a boss. But, um, you're right. Mr. Phil, Commissioner Land, anyone else?
No, sir, I, I'm, I'm like, Mr. Stapleton, I don't want to stand and go in like, so, that's not what I'm intending to do here tonight. Um, I'm okay with, um, I mean, we're gonna say it again, whether you, whether it's denied, or whether we continue, it's coming back, so...
I'm, 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 I agree, I, I'm good with the continuation, as Commissioner Stapleton suggested there, because in my opinion, I think that's gonna give both sides a little more time to give us a little more information, and hopefully our communities, they will have some time to hear us and see what's going on, do a little more.
Um, so, uh, which could back...
Procedurally, the chairman can grant the continuance, and we'll pick the time, if either at the next meeting, or the meeting after that. Um, we have to kind of waive the, the time period, so we can move forward at another date.
So we, we have to have a motion, or...
Chairman rules will now.
And then, so we'll, uh, offer a continuance... Okay, so we'll, uh, offer a continuation to, I guess, to a date.
Okay, good. What we'll do is we'll get together our calendars and try to see which we're at all worked in. Um, hopefully, we, I don't think we'll be able to make it for the next meeting, but the following meeting then, so be looking toward the first meeting in May.
And I believe that's the one in the city hall.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just talked about that earlier.
You want to show up to the right building for that?
It's, it's gonna be the city hall.
So with that, we'll, uh, offer the continuation and, uh, request this public period.
If you're continuing, you're continuing the public period.
You're continuing, sorry.
You're recessing the.
Recessing the public period.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure everybody's writing in the notes, so.
We got it. That's what we got. Thank y'all. Uh, item 25 or soon thereafter, item 26. Has 25 or soon thereafter a matter to be heard over public hearing to consider approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021, Mr. Chair. Do you need to square any?
Yes, sir, no problem. This is, Mr. Keith's chef.
Okay. I'm here to present the, uh, amendments for our 2020, 2021, um, fiscal year. We have, um, six amendments that we're making. First one is for the state attorney fund, uh, maybe, uh... We have an additional seventeen thousand sixty-two dollars for the various reimbursement. Those revenues are total revenues for that fund to two hundred and eighty-six thousand ninety-two dollars. Those were appropriated, appropriated to the rentals, leases, uh, line, period, for the state attorney's office. The second amendment is for the EMS county awards grant, additional ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. For that bringing the total revenue for that fund to ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Appropriations are being remembered, according to the funds for that particular grant. The third amendment, budget amendment is for the emergency management grant fund, additional nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the EMPA, EMPG, Ashton grants to the sheriff. An additional six thousand dollars for, um, some other revenue sources, bringing the total revenue for that particular fund to two hundred and six thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Appropriations are on point, nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven for the, uh, EMPA, EMPG, Ashton, and there are other various appropriations for that particular fund. The, uh, fifth budget amendment is for the voting equipment fund, increasing the balance forward by thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Bringing the total revenue for that fund to one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, six, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Those additional funds were used for the first election, election system hardware and software. And the final budget amendment is for the solid waste collection fund, an additional eighty-one thousand forty-three dollars. Under non-adblock and special exception, bringing the total revenue for that fund to two million six hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Those were appropriated to motor fuels and repair and maintenance. Those are budget amendments we have as a 2020 fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think the shuttle lady's wanting to go. She's probably getting her recorder out there.
You can, you can go ahead and get it if you want. Any questions on, uh, Mr. Chair, please? I'll now, is this a public hearing?
Yes, sir, it is. They have a chance to add public input, except this is not a particular type of hearing where people are sworn, but they can ask questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll now, uh, open the floor to public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this? I'm sorry, I missed the board question. The staff, we did, uh, open the floor to public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing no one, we will close, close this public hearing, close the public comment, uh, do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over item 27 and move on down to item 28 so Mr. Keith can get out. Under item 28, discussed with possible board action, final plat approval of March point subdivision, please.
Mr. Chairman, uh, board members, this is a final plat approval for March point subdivision. Uh, the board had issued preliminary approval back in December 7th, 2021. The March point subdivision is a, um, twenty-two point one zero acres in size, contains a total of four lots, each containing five point five acres. Um, subdivision was located at the intersection of 217th Road and County Route 250. It's also bordered, uh, to the north by Land and Castro Road. Uh, access to the lots will be off, will be limited to 217th Road, which is the county pay road. Uh, by shared driveways that are shown on the plat with an easement access between the lot lines. The, uh, plat itself has been reviewed for compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes and has been signed off on by, um, another surveyor for that. You have your, uh, Malar copies, Logan has them for the board's signatures, if the board chooses to approve the final plat for the subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Any questions, Mr. Keith, please? Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 29, discussed with possible board action, final plat approval of Rockwell Estates, Mr. Keith.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is, uh, another final plat approval for, uh, Rockwell Estates. Uh, the board had previously granted preliminary approval of this subdivision on October 5th of 2021. Size of this subdivision is a twenty-acre parcel, containing four five-acre tracts. Property fronts County Route 49, with shared driveway easements, uh, between lots one and two and three and four. Uh, this plat was also reviewed for compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes and signed off on by another surveyor for that. Um, Logan as well, but this one has your Malar copies for the chairman's signature, if the board chooses to approve, it's on the plat.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Any questions, Mr. Keith? If not, if I have a question, we're clear. Uh, motion by Commissioner Flynn, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 30, discussed with possible board action for preliminary plat approval of Duke's Place subdivision, please.
Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, this is a preliminary plat approval, uh, for Duke's Place subdivision. Total size of the subdivision is twenty-five point one zero acres in size, contains a total of five lots, uh, sizes of those lots are five acres in size. It's a little bit unique in that the zoning on this property is residential single family, so it's RSF1, which would allow the developer an intensity of one dwelling unit per acre. Um, but they've chosen to develop lots in, in larger lot sizes. Um, access to this proposed subdivision will be off State Route 51. Um, I will note that in the review, that a portion of this property, uh, you can see it on the preliminary plat, um, is located in its own A flood zone, I believe it's on lot number four. Um, this zone has, uh, no base flood elevation because it's an unknown flood zone. So, uh, when the final plat does come back before the board, there will need to be a base flood elevation established for that, uh, unnumbered A zone. Uh, we are participants, participants of the national flood insurance program and under that program, um, if your subdivisions exceed fifty lots or five acres in size, whichever one is less, uh, you do have to establish base flood elevations for unnumbered A zones. So when the plat is prepared for final approval of the board, we'll anticipate having those, uh, base floods set and monumented on the plat for reference points for someone to do, uh, elevation. If their home were to be located, uh, in those flood zones, there would be required specific elevation. Um, plat will come back before the board for final plat approval at a later date, um, so at this point in time, we would be just asking for preliminary approval of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Any questions, Mr. Keith? If not, uh, motion for approval?
Summer, second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll run back up to item number 27, adoption of a res, sorry, resolution complaining the month of April as National Healthcare Decisions Month. You want me to read that? Declaring Swan, uh, Swan County Florida proclamation, declaring April 2022 as National Healthcare Decisions Month in Swan County, Florida. National Healthcare Decision Day is recognized across our nation on April 16th, 2020, 20, sorry, 2022 to raise public awareness of the need to plan ahead for healthcare decisions, especially those related to end-of-life care and medical decision-making. When patients are unable to speak for themselves and to encourage the specific use of advanced directives to communicate those important, these important healthcare decisions. Many Swan County Florida residents have not yet prepared for healthcare decisions in times of crisis, crisis or end-of-life, nor had important conversation with their families and their healthcare with their families and documented, documented those decisions. It is likely a significant reason for these low percentages is that there is both a lack of awareness and an uncertainty in the public about advanced directives. One of the goals of Healthcare Decision Day is to raise awareness and provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced directives. As well as to encourage medical professionals and lawyers to volunteer their time and efforts to improve public knowledge and increase the number of citizens with advanced directives. Haven Hospice endorses this event and is committed to educating the public during the month of April to stress the importance of discussion, discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives to make their wishes known. Through the county vested in me by the Board of County Commissioners in Swan County, Florida, I do hereby proclaim April 20, 2022 as National Healthcare Decisions Month in Swan County, Florida. Do you want to do a picture?
Yes.
Did you want to speak? I'm sorry, we get to the bottom of this.
My name is Mike D. Cruz. I'm a community relations representative for Community Hospital and Public Care. This is very important to us because we have over sixteen hundred patients on our service daily and we see on a regular basis family members having to make decisions for their loved ones. And when their loved one passes, the family is left to do, to wonder, did I make a hard choice? That would not want me to do, is that would happen, you do, grandma, grandma? And so we appreciate the opportunity. No, thank you.
Mike D.
I got a motion by Commissioner Stapleton to adopt a resolution. Second by Commissioner Flynn, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I'm the rep for Haven Hospice. I miss Butler.
Yeah. Do you want to do the picture now or?
I do, yeah, that's okay.
All right, three, two, one.
You know why he gets played big bucks?
Yes, for sure. Thanks, guys.
Moving on to, uh, Commissioner Allen's, uh, for the statement, we had something.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to get an update from legal counsel, Mr. Prabat, on our, uh, addressing of the casinos and the, to do the process of where we're at, what we're looking at.
Yes, sir. We have the draft completed and, uh, it can be submitted whenever you would like it to be on the agenda. We have certain applicant, I mean, the notice permitted ahead of time, two weeks ahead of time, who won't be able to make the next meeting. And, uh, but certainly first meeting, we can have it done.
That's, uh, that's fine, uh, just like.
I, I would just, because we changed some of the definitions and stuff like that, I will be bringing it, you know, to you or at least get you a copy of it. It just kind of tweaked what we have done with the definitions, whatever we've got title and so everything. So it's gonna look just a little bit in a different format and stuff, so I'm not free to see it ahead of time, but it'll be ready, you know, for notice and everything, uh, for the maybe first meeting.
I'd like to, just move forward. Uh, it's not a board, but obviously, that's our position, so.
So you're excited first, leaving tonight?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or have anything left? Um, I think before we get too far gone, I see Jeff and Dana here. I would like to get them to come up real quick before we completely close out and talk about some fun things that happened over the weekend out there. Okay. Yes, sir.
Jeff Rutherford, 1857, first place. Update on Palm Street, um, Mr. Pittman, the engineer that's working with the city, significantly completed with the drawings, um, for the Palm Street repaving project. We know that the city today, uh, is being very proud of installing, uh, underground sewer more taps across the road prior to being paved, um, looking forward to getting started on that. Having, having to continue to support the business, further developments going on on street. Just want to update the county and, uh, let y'all look closer to what the city can accomplish. We greatly appreciate it.
Anything else exciting happening out there this weekend?
Uh, the gathering opened up at the Live of Commerce. Um, they had a soft opening, uh, Friday and Saturday. Um, they, they fully opened today. They don't have any signage in place or any, any lettering. They've been full and busy. Uh, every day they've been open, the course of food is of the same quality that it always is, um, and, yeah. Good for local food economy and hopefully keep people in our, our community spending.
You're good, pretty good, present.
I think Jeff said over this one that, uh, there's no plans for cell towers on Palm Street.
Now, you sure, are you going to speak?
Dana Lerman speaking on behalf of Palm Street Live of Investments.
Address, please. Address.
Um, 180 Palm Street, North.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff, it was, it was a good weekend at the gathering, uh, I think what they expected, but, um, the city, uh, is, is very far along their progress, so, and some Jimmy Pitt was a little engineering, and, uh, I realize how long they are, they're, they're involved a lot, they have a key understanding and their own speech, so.
Mr. Chairman, I see one more question. Are you, are, how many tenants are in this old house out there now? Are you?
In which building?
Both.
Um, we, we have one vacancy in the comments, which is the post office property. And, um, we had some turnover in warehouses and they're all, they're full again. We have, um, one vacancy simply because they, um, they have price insurance for nature of the business. The insurance quotes are high. Uh, so if they can find insurance quotes more reasonable, they're open, but, um, but I got nervous, you know, I think there's a turnover and, um, you know, it may as well come back in, so we're basically full of our properties.
Great. Mr. Chairman, this is, Dana, are you working with the city to help en, ensure that they are running the water sewer taps on the opposite side? I know you, I don't think you own a company on the other side, but...
I know you, I don't think you own a property on the other side, but to prevent the pavement getting torn up when we get to that point, that they got some?
So the folks that we met with today, this is the public works director and I guess they sure, they're all, they asked us about the use of the property across the street, which I guess is owned by Daniels. I don't know if the use is, it is listed for sale. They have Realtors sign up there, so they asked us if the use was, they weren't aware of it. The sewer runs down that side of the street already and I think water also, but they're trying to mitigate disturbing the street once it's paid for in anticipation of somebody else developing across the street.
Yeah, that was my question. I wasn't sure that what side of the road that there's, that structure ran on and it doesn't matter, just that if it's on their side, the north side, that they put all the crossings in place prior to that asphalt head.
Yeah, so the sanitary sewer is on the north side of the street already and water, actually I think water is on our side of the street, but they, I think it's all made for, I know it's for the, I haven't seen the actual, I haven't seen the plane, but I haven't seen.
I don't know if any intended use over there, but just in the event someone buys and does something, it'd be nice to know that that infrastructure's in place without having to go digging road up or jack and bore underneath it.
That's all I got. Thank you, great point. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Are there any other Commissioner items? Mr. Vatt, any county attorney items?
Yes, sir.
I got you this time. Any additional agenda items? Public concerns and comments? Anyone wishing to speak?
I'm shocked. I don't know why. Oh, hey, God, really great, Swan County. Two things. The one on the tower issue, the attorney then told you one time, you got to have a lease, you got to tell him. And y'all should even get involved between AT&T and the other tower. All you're supposed to do is either approve or disapprove of that tower, but that's just between me and you, but I want to know your reasons and just tell me it's not to the benefit of citizens of one kind, he's going to act it. The second thing I have, in August, at the budget workshop, you all know what a workshop is. Y'all discussed, you need to have some workshops. One of the issues was the wage compression issue. Then other things came in, solid waste is another, and you don't have all the information on that yet, but it's time to quit kicking a can down the road. Eight months? The schedule of dead gum workshop is ridiculous. And you're not fixing anything. You budget money every year to handle projects and do different things. Takes eight months to do anything, and you still ain't doing anything? Something's wrong somewhere with this county that you're not moving forward. You sit up here twice a month, and I keep asking, where's the workshops? When are you going to do it? There are several issues that y'all have brought up that you need to have a workshop on. Who decides to have a workshop? Can y'all do it? Just this air is moving. Who does it? Can somebody say you need to have a workshop? Can have it?
Yes, sir.
As a citizen, you're worried about the citizens, as he says, I am tired of waiting. Get your information together. Is it all going to be perfect every time? I doubt it. Situations change. But have dead gum workshops you keep talking about. You want more information, that's where you're going to get it. I mean, Mr. Commissioner Landall is saying, yeah, then you do it.
I don't disagree.
When y'all going to do it? Who makes the decision?
I guess I'd be me.
I don't want to go in the pot bin there, but.
Well, I feel like I've got a tire track running up my back about right now.
Hey, you got my point?
Yes, sir.
Let's do something.
Thank you.
Quit kicking the can.
And I also, Mr. Chairman, if I can, Mr. Vatt, and he raises every, so often he'll come up and talk to us about this, but I know the, these folks only say, get to see us up here two times a month, but I would encourage you guys all, we have other boards and other meetings that we go to, that a lot of these things are being discussed, please come to those, they're all for the meetings as well, please, I know it's hard for everybody to get to these things. Some of those meetings, like what me and Mr. Norris go to, are so educational to me and things that we are learning and trying to implement that fits the mold of Swan County. Obviously it can't be, some of it's Jacksonville games or some of that nature, but I would love for folks like yourself to come to those and speak as well, Mr. Vatt, because I think the last meeting we were at, I think I'm fantastic, Mr. Vatt, to be at, absolutely. I think you would enjoy them because that's, that's the things like you're talking about, I think we're trying to do to help the county grow and that's the meetings and other things that I believe that we go to to try to get that information to bring back.
Is there a calendar that has all the meetings that y'all go to and different things like that? Now, don't tell me to go look in the newspaper, because I'm seventy-four years old, I wear glasses and I still can't read that damn small print.
There's a group of folks that can see us all straight and I'm sure they can get you that information.
I get that information, I wouldn't mind going to some of them.
Yeah, I think, I just think you and the rest of the community would find them all very.
I know about my case, some of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anybody else wishing to speak? See, none. We'll go to the administrators' comments. Anybody here?
Let me say briefly, the workshops are coming. I'm going to comment on one piece of the workshop. I think the board agreed that we were going to try to have the workshop that included the minimum wage issue and the solid waste issue at the same time. The chairman and I met with a particular party that's still supposed to get additional information back to the chairman. Mr. Locklear is also working on finalizing the information on the landfill. There was some information that he had needed, he now has it, so we should have that back soon. Mr. Gentry had provided information. We have that now, the minimum wage and the potential impacts going forward, so we're just waiting for this last bit of information that the chairman and I need, which we don't have yet, so hopefully we'll have it soon, and then we'll come in here and ask the board to schedule that workshop.
When does the bid on the door go out?
You'll have a public hearing coming up soon, maybe your next meeting, is when we have to have the mandatory other hearing just to discuss that as even an option. That's a requirement of statute that's been advertised, so I think we'll have that meeting and once that meeting occurs, then we can move forward with the actual requests we're proposing.
Give me you.
Mr. Fleming. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Fleming, you don't have, you got to have some.
It's just going to be.
I just, I feel the same way. It's great to be here, I appreciate everybody, a lot of people attending the meetings, being involved. Just like I say, Easter's coming up, a lot of family getting together, it's just thank everybody and love ones getting together. Mr. Chairman, on the way out the door, my daughter told me, she said, Daddy, you look just like Easter egg today. Tom, she was, she was getting on to it, but.
It's all good.
That's all I got, just, we'll see you next time.
I'm going to keep it short. I just went over and asked Commissioner Hale.
I come at everything she can't keep up, but maybe it's because, I'm just hot because Bo, Bo got it over the heat and he got his hat on to me again. And with the whole issue with the tower thing, got a little hot in here, but that's, I don't have anything, I already got it.
Nothing, but just echoing everybody's words, I'm glad to see everyone here. I would mention that the, I did not participate, I'm a few of you guys that took on here, I understand it got cut short due to weather, but a lot of folks had a lot, a lot of fun and I'm just glad they do that, veterans, and guys continue to pray in our country, green, you know, sometimes you just don't know. I say all the time, your neighbor next door, you may not know what we're going through, so let's pray for everybody.
One more thing. Mr. Hancock, I will say that there was a time when I thought this board just showed up for two times a month and got paid pretty well for it. I think Mr. Norris, Mr. Scott, Mr. Harris, some of these guys up here can attest you, it's a whole hell of a lot more than that. Mr. Norris drove me to a three-hour meeting yesterday, it was supposed to be an hour and a half, we were there for three. If my phone, if I show you my recent calls, it's six pages. It's a lot more coming up here for an hour and a half, lots and lots, I can assure you that, but that's all I got.
That's true, that's why I was saying, and I will say it generally, I do mean some of the stuff that me and Timmy and probably you guys get to, and all of our boards are for it, but Mr. Bo wants a workshop, wants a meeting, it's about thirty a month. I say thirty, one thirty, there's about thirty different ones that we do where it's phone calls or between all of us, is what I'm saying, we get together and have a meeting, and it's a lot, it really is, and you're right, maybe sometimes we should come together. And we talk about it and you see a thing or two on the agenda, does that matter that that commissioner is specific to that board if you will, and we should have more discussion about us. You bring up a lot of good points, I'm, we're all picking on you and we do appreciate you.
Yes, I know you have.
Pick away. Mr. Chairman, let's all, let's all be clear here, Mr. Hancock was just ready to give us a good tune tonight, it's been a while.
It's been a minute, that's for sure.
He got us.
Somebody's got to do it.
I get a point, but one more, I'm sure. Point taken, Mr. Hancock, we'll, we'll get it, I promise you, and I've been telling you we're going to, and I've been telling you, we've been waiting on the burgers thing, and we'll get to it, I promise you. I'm just, sorry, Mac, I'm sorry. Come on up, no, I want you to go ahead and do that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, remember your board, I will take that much else down, I promise.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Robert Engel, six-two-five, Merrimack Street, Thomas. In a recent phone call with Mr. White, I have proposed to him, given all the cooperation with Hamilton County Building Department and Madison County Building Department, maybe a good idea to do a letter of appreciation to Madison County, Florida County Commissioners and Hamilton County and their respective building departments, namely Mr. John R. and Mr. Rick Anderson. I just feel it's a good idea to keep communication between counties, they have given it all itself. The other item I had, I said, keep going, in the same conversation with Mr. White, he had kind of made a mention about where we were at with the building department's part of numbers right now. For the month of January, we permitted sixteen new single-family dwellings in the county. We permitted fourteen new mobile homes. We took in a total of one hundred and thirty-four applications and issued one hundred and twenty-nine permits. In February, we permitted eight new single-family dwellings and thirty-two mobile homes. We took in a hundred and nine applications and issued a hundred and seventeen permits. For January and February, total permanent fees taken in by Swan County Building Department were fifty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents.
I just want to say thank you, Mac, and I'm sorry I ran past you on that.
Sure, sure.
I really wanted you to get up and say that and we do appreciate other counties helping out with the building department, and we're having a sort of a time here and we appreciate you keeping it up to speed and appreciate what you do.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, I'll be right back.
That was Mac, at the end, he broke a lot of tension, I told him it was great. Also, his mind is, went to the Chamber of Commerce First Annual Golf Tournament and it was a pretty good success, they had a hundred golfers and really a, I'd say, Mr. Vatt, you're a professional golfer, it was a pretty good event.
Yes, sir.
And I've never been the one where they had food around the course and stuff to drink while you were hitting there, but it was a pretty nice setup. Yeah, playing A-R-A-G-O-R. And it was a pretty nice setup and looked like a pretty good success and I just wanted to throw that out there and, Mr. Bo, I'm going to get you a workshop, I'll tell you again before I leave. And other than that, that's all I've got. We're getting a motion to dismiss.
Oh, promotion.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Landall, all in favor, out. All opposed, same sign.